Welcome to the council meeting of December the 10th, 2019. Notices. Council will hold a special meeting on December the 17th, beginning at 4:00 PM, to receive the operational review report from Strategy Corp. I'd also like to announce Eugene Ivanoff's 59th birthday today. Congratulations.[51.57][51.57](Laughter). We'll have a moment of silence after that.[56.12][56.12](Laughter). Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of December 10th, 2019, with the addition of item 6 IB4, the efficiency reserves drawdown for mechanics diagnostic computer.
All in favor? Petitions and delegations? Whoops, sorry. Declaration of pecuniary interest. Councillor Owen.
Yes, I have a declaration of pecuniary interest in 63A, implementation of use of a hydro permit application, as my son and my wife both work in the water department.
Any other declarations? Councillor Perrier?
I have a declaration of pecuniary interest with rezoning in that at Nettie Lake, because I have a trailer out there.
Acceptance of the minutes and recommendations.
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The museum advisory board held June 19th, September 18th, and October 23rd, 2019. The Kirkland Lake Public Library held October 17th, 2019. The Kirkland Lake Youth Council Committee held November 25th and December 5th, 2019. The committee, the whole, held December 3rd, 2019, and the regular meeting of council held December 23rd, 2019.
All in favor? Reports of municipal officers and communications. Committee of the whole reporting long-term care. Councillor Ivanoff?
Yeah, there was talk of... There was talk of an expansion of TPR, putting a second floor over top of the Tolburn unit. That has now been withdrawn. The...they had people from Magic come in, have a look at the building, and it's not constructed in a way that that second floor can be put on without huge extra costs. And the...you'd have to get all the residents out of the Tolburn, so which makes no sense to do both. Where would you find a home for...that's the dementia unit, the Alzheimer unit. And so that's not possible. The construction was never designed for a second floor.
Make note that we should advise the funding, area of funding of that we're withdrawing our application.
So I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council has accepted a report stating that TPR was not designed to take a second story, and that council repeals the resolution of October 15th, 2019, directing staff, which directed staff to submit an application to the Ministry of Long-Term Care for build or redevelopment of existing long-term care bed fund. So that's just repealed.
All in favor? Efficiency repairs drawdown?
This is just resolutions.
Just a resolution? Go ahead.
I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves drawing down $2,178 from the organizational restructuring and efficiency funding for staff expenses incurred related to the strategic organizational review.
All in favor? Passed.
The next one is moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves drawing down $28,250 plus HST from the organizational restructuring and efficiency funding for consulting services related to the recruiting and hiring of a chief administrative officer.
Any discussion? All in favor? Centennial reserve?
So it's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves any net revenues from the Centennial Committee project realized by the end of 2019 be transferred to the Centennial Committee Reserve until a future use is determined by council. And that council approves all reserves generated from the Gold Coin Project be transferred to the Centennial Committee Reserve until a future use is determined by council.
All in favor? Passed.
And then there is one other item that was the addition to the agenda. It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves drawing down $763.54 from the organizational restructuring and efficiency funding for the over-budgeted expenses related to the mechanics diagnostic computer.
All in favor? Councillor Casey Owens with an S.
All right, so we've got a motion here that was presented at Timiskaming Municipal Association, as well as Timiskaming Shores and several other smaller communities in the southern part of the district. THU's got a $1.3 million reserve right now. That reserve was set up for operational and capital projects, and we...there is no need right now to have such a big amount of money. With the impending mergers of health units in Ontario, we do not know what's going to happen. We know we will be forced to amalgamate, because the minister made it very clear that status quo is not an option. So we feel that instead of having this money sit in THU's bank account, we would rather have it sit in the municipalities that fund THU. So as we will be returning back $829,000 to the district, it's going to be divided according to what each municipality pays into it, so Timiskaming Shores will get the bigger share than us, then so on. The recommendation now is to set this money aside for future increases. Because of the change in formula that the Ministry of Health has put out, so the 30...excuse me, 30/70 split, so our costs are going up this year. We will have to fund more into it. There is gap funding for 2020, so the impact on Kirkland Lake won't be as big. There's no indication as to what's going to happen in 2021, so the recommendation is to keep that money aside, so that way when...there will be an increase, we just don't know how big of an increase. And so to alleviate pressure on the taxpayers, it's recommended that we keep this money aside for eventual increases in what we have to fund to THU.
Casey, just to clarify, we're not drawing down to zero?
No, no, we're leaving $500,000 for...because capital aside, all...like, everything's been upgraded, there's no...there's no need for capital investment right now, so we've... they're keeping $500,000 in reserves for operational expenses if ever something was to come up in the next few months, or until the announcement is made on April 1st.
Yeah, I believe that's your mandate to...
Yeah.
Normally have up to 500,000.
Yeah, but up for three months' expenses for payroll bills or whatever has to be covered by.
Okay. We have a bylaw?
I have a resolution, sir. That's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Whereas the town of Kirkland Lake is serviced by the Timiskaming Health Unit on a shared cost formula with district municipalities. And whereas these shared costs include the current reserves of the Timiskaming Health Unit. And whereas the province of Ontario has stated its intent to study the current public health unit structure with a proposed target of reducing the number of operating public health units from the current 35 to as few as 10 public health units. And whereas any consolidation or reduction in the number of public health units may come with significant employee severances. And whereas any potential severance would be due to the sole discretion-making of the province of Ontario. And whereas any employee severance is created from any reduction or consolidation of public health units should be the responsibility of the province of Ontario. Now therefore, be it resolved that council of the town of Kirkland Lake hereby requests the Timiskaming Health Unit to return current reserves to participating funding municipalities under the same formula as collected, and that the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake holds such dollars in a reserve fund until final decisions are made and carried out by the province of Ontario, the intent of which is to fund future Timiskaming Health operating costs. And furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Timiskaming Municipal Association, Timiskaming Health Unit, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, and each member of the Timiskaming Health Unit Board.
All in favor? Acting CAO, Eve?
Yep. So yeah, we had a request, and Ycool wanted to do some drilling behind our facilities, our industrial land, and they want to connect to our hydrant. So we were...we sort of formulated a...sort of an agreement or a permit that would make them liable for all costs involved incurred them, so that we would install a meter with a backflow preventer, and we would have them pay for an enclosure, heated enclosure, some heating, so that the water doesn't freeze. And we would charge them, we put in the schedule of the metered water costs, and so that meter... reading from that meter, we would charge them as per our present bylaw, and the price would increase as we go. We just have to amend the scheduling, so I would like for council to approve this. And then in the future, we've never done this, but this is a, I think, some extra revenue for our water system, so I think we've limited our liability and our risk.
Okay. John?
I have resolutions moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves the implementation of use of hydrant permit application as presented by the interim chief administrative officer.
All in favor?
The next one is...there's...we're starting to receive a lot of invites for annual conferences of different organizations, so I realize we're not members of all of them, but I wanted to see if there was an appetite for an interest to join some of these organizations and which one. And because as we...we will have to register for this conference early in the year, like registration is always starting, so if we could get an indication, if we can have that discussion, so that we can move forward on this. And some...it'll affect also our 2020 budget, so we need to have that information anyways. So the AMO, Association of Municipalities of Ontario. There is Roma, Rural Ontario Municipal Association. OGRA, Ontario Good Roads Association. FANOM, Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities. T-MAG, Timiskaming Mayor's Action Group. TMA, Timiskaming Municipal Association. And there's Niopwa, Northeastern Ontario Public Works Organization. And FCM, Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, Eve, I think a number of councillors realize the importance of networking and having a chance to meet with ministers and people of influence to put our case firsthand, and to be able to phone them a week after the conference and say, "Hi, how things going?" to improve our chances of getting funding from senior levels. Now, personally, I have mixed feelings on this, because there's a lot of associations up there, some of which I'm sure we could benefit from, some of which maybe in better economic times we would join, but under our current constraints. So I was just wondering, with your experience, which organizations do you think would be a good fit for council in our current economic situation?
Well, the first one for sure is, I think, you get a good bang for your bucks, FANOM, that's for sure. And FANOM, I think, I believe there was that one time, 105 municipalities, and that's real force. I think when you join that association, they work for the north, and they work as a group, and they work very well. So for sure, FANOM is a real good one. I don't know what your interest is. Some of the other ones are like, it's too bad that they separated Roma and Ontario Good Roads Association, because that used to be a combined conference, and I think they're thinking of bringing that back, but still not back, so that it makes it very costly to go to two. A lot of municipalities were disappointed with that. For sure, you should try and participate in the area ones like Timiskaming and Niopwa. Those are immediately in your area, and they're not very expensive, and your traveling costs are very little. Niopwa has a couple of meetings a year, and it's mostly in Timmins. It's all the Northeastern Ontario Public Works Organization, it goes from Timogami all the way to Greenstone. So you have 17 or 18 municipalities, and they share a lot of ideas, and there's training for management in there. And I think the registration is about $50 or $75. I can't remember how much it is, but it's no more than $75 to join Niopwa. You've just got to send people to train...their training, it costs you a bit of money, but it's only Timmins. So I don't know what other councillors feel would be important, but those for sure. I think they're...you have one that's regional, and the other one...the other ones are Northeastern Ontario with FANOM, so they're not too expensive.
Do we...Eve, I guess the question here, at AMO or Roma, do we...normally both? Both of them offer the opportunity to meet with ministers or deputy ministers?
Yeah, they do. I would suggest you have to choose between the...I would go to AMO, and you could actually alternate. You could go to AMO one year, go to Roma the following year, and you'll be able to compare. And this way, you're still financially being prudent. And so I would suggest you pick one of those two and see how it goes. But those are two conferences that you are able to meet with ministers, and especially when there's grant applications, those are the place you want to be. And this year, we will have grant applications, so I would suggest one of them. AMO is well-attended also, it's a bigger conference. There's a lot of good...a lot of good training at these conferences, too, for both councillors and staff, and they're really interesting. All kinds of training there. It's a couple of days long, and all kinds of opportunities there to learn. Like, it's not only sitting there and listening to politicians, it's...there's a lot of training going on in these conferences.
Eve, if we had to withdraw from either AMO or Roma, which one would you think would be the best to stay in?
I think for now, because they separated...if OGRA and Roma would be together, I would suggest that one, because it's really good for both staff and council, because OGRA, it's all about a lot of public work stuff, and it's a big conference. But for now, I would suggest you go to AMO this year, and hopefully next year, they'll have the combine back together, and then you can join that one. Because Roma, when Roma and OGRA were together, it was a real good conference. Well-attendance, about 2,000 people attending, and now they've separated the group quite a bit.
Okay, so that would mean withdrawing from Ontario Good Roads?
Yeah, and Roma. And then next year, if they've got them back together...apparently they're talking again to bring them back together.
Okay. Councillor White?
Well, we definitely realized that we're kind of behind the ball with our lobbying. We've discussed this several times, and though we do have to spend money, as the saying goes, we have to spend money to make money, and we really need to let our presence be known, not only in our region, but in Ontario as a whole. And we have to be face-to-face with these ministers, we have to be. We've got no choice.
Yeah, we did withdraw from Nioma, which is Northeastern Ontario Municipal Association, which takes in the Timmins group and, I believe, up to Hurst. We were in that for several years. I attended one meeting. Mixed feelings. We have a real good relationship with Timmins and Matheson in our immediate area. The other areas, we don't see that often, other than that FANOM. So we opted out in last year's, and I think staying out for this year again is okay. We can have another look at that next year. I would recommend, this is a toss-up, either getting out of Roma or Ontario Good Roads, one or the other. Any comments? Councillor Ivanoff?
Well, so what I hear is that we should be in AMO, we should be in FANOM, T-MAG, TMA, and Northeastern Public Works. Is that what the one you mentioned? So, you know what? I'd suggest that we do those, and we don't go into either Good Roads or Roma. If that's what Eva suggested, and he's got more expertise than any of us have, since we're fairly new to this, I would suggest we do exactly that.
Okay. Councillor Owen?
Do we have to decide tonight who's going, or can that wait until a later date?
Okay, so I have a motion that's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves budgeting attendance for members of council and staff at the following conferences. The Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, Northeastern Ontario Public Works Organization, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, T-MAG, and TMA.
All in favor? Thank you, Eve. Manager of planning and land development, Nettie Lake rezoning.
Okay, so I'm just going to try to summarize to the best of my ability the report that's presented in front of you tonight. Things to consider, you have three options at this point, which is what we were discussing at the last meeting. You either have the ability to approve this application, or approve the zoning bylaw as it stands with the holding provision. You have an option to defer, or you have an option to deny. The recommendations from myself and Rick Hunter, who is the planning consultant that had addressed the planning reports for this file, we both either recommend you approve it with the conditions that we've stipulated in the rezoning application, or you deny it because those things are missing. So either/or, we're happy to support you with either of those two decisions. So the last council meeting, there were about three or four questions that I felt were still outstanding that council needed addressed prior to making this decision. So just to go through them quickly, there was the concern of whether or not the properties formed part of the parkland dedication referred to in the subdivision agreement. From our understanding, staff's understanding, we've reviewed the file, we've looked at it in its entirety, the subdivision agreement clearly states that the part...or the dedicated land that was given to the town is identified in the map that's in this report. Sorry, Joanne, I'm just going to get you to scroll down to that map. Yeah, there you go. So the areas identified in yellow were actually the pieces of land that are considered parkland dedication in the subdivision agreement. The areas that are being rezoned do not form part of those areas, so they're completely separate. That's staff's opinion, that's the way I look at it, from my knowledge with reading subdivision agreements and the comments back and forth. So no, they do not form part of the parkland dedication. There was the concern that the MNR specified that no development should occur on Nettie. So the letter that individuals are referring to dates back to 1978, and its correspondence that would have taken place with the ministries while looking at the plan of subdivision application. So plan of subdivision applications are actually presented to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing at this time. We've now been delegated authority for that, but at that point, the ministry was the one that took over those applications. And what they did was they received the application, then circulated to various of their ministries to get comments. So this letter, in my opinion, is the response back from MNR, and it specified that conditions should be added to the proposed subdivision, which included no new vacant lots, that the proposed lots where cottages now exist be approved. There's options for vacant lots that were beside those existing cottages to be incorporated into the existing lots, so you wouldn't create additional living spaces on Nettie, and that the existing cottages be used for seasonal and recreational use only. And the wording that MNR actually used in this letter was that the lake is considered grossly overdeveloped. So that is the letter that everybody has brought to the table as a big concern with development on Nettie Lake. So it is important to remember that this letter was early on in the subdivision agreement. It actually didn't get passed till 2003, so you can imagine the conversations that would have taken place between '78 and 2003. There is an abundance of communication, and our staff, myself included, have actually gone through this file meticulously to determine who...we have a table, and it's about probably seven or eight pages long, of the date of the correspondence, the people that were involved in that correspondence, and a brief summary of what was discussed in each element of that correspondence. So really good breakdown of how the subdivision came to be. And I can tell you that MNR was very much involved in this plan of subdivision process. So in terms of moving forward, whether or not...whether MNR still has its rule of no development should occur on Nettie Lake, we got a look at what's happened since then. We've recently adopted the 2015 official plan. In the official plan, that document would have been circulated again via Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing and to the various ministries for comment. And the section that details what's required for development on Nettie Lake is stipulated in section 5.3.4, and it essentially says a lake shore capacity assessment needs to take place and have favorable results in order to allow development to take place. So at any point, if the MNR was against development on Nettie Lake, they would not have approved this section of the official plan. This is...that's how I...you know, you read the policy, and you read the legislation, and the rules and regulations that are in front of us in order to come to our decision or come to our recommendation. So I also wanted to mention that before we brought this application forward to council, we actually had the lake shore capacity study reviewed in its entirety by the Ministry of Environment to get their take on whether it was compliant with their regulations. They did say that they did not normally get involved, but we did have concerns about interpreting the technical guidelines, and wanted to be very sure that it was meeting the requirements that they had. So I do want to mention that originally, when this was presented to us, the decision from the environmental consultants was not favorable. They had to go back and impose conditions, which are the ones that we're still seeing that are outstanding, in order to allow a favorable recommendation from the environmental planner. So you're right, the ministry did suggest no further development should occur on Nettie, but there has been policy that has been adopted, and as a professional planner, it's my job to follow you through that, the regulations and the rules that are there, to make sure you're looking at the right ones. So you have to look at it, the official plan, does it meet the official plan? Currently, it does not. Needs to meet those conditions. Once those conditions are satisfied, you should be able to...we can recommend approval for the decision. So the next question was whether year-round homes were permitted on Nettie. No, they are not. There are some year-round homes that were established prior to the subdivision agreement coming into effect. They would likely hold a legal non-conforming status, meaning they're non-conforming, but they're legal because it happened before the bylaw was created. Anyone who has converted their cottage or has built a new structure and is living in the building year-round is considered out of compliance with the zoning bylaw. I can tell you that no building permits have been issued for year-round single-detached dwellings on Nettie since the zoning was put in place in 2003. The issue from a lot of...that's the next question's going to be enforcement, why aren't we enforcing? The municipality has operated on complaint basis, and when it comes to legally enforcing the zoning bylaw, it comes down to the language that we have in our existing zoning bylaw. the zoning bylaw, it comes down to the language that we have in our existing zoning bylaw. So a cottage is considered a building designed and built as an independent and separate housekeeping establishment with separate culinary and sanitary facilities provided for the exclusive use of one family for temporary occupancy during vacation periods, and not for permanent occupancy. The act, so when you look at that, using the property for year-round purposes is pretty difficult to prove, and you have to consider how it's defined. So temporary occupancy versus permanent occupancy isn't defined in our bylaw, so it makes it even more challenging to take it to court and have it hold up and see results come from the enforcement strategies with their zoning bylaw. I can tell you our zoning bylaw is going to be updated. I just put out the RFP today, so we should see that happen within the next year. I'm going to make it a priority that Nettie Lake and Goodfish get looked at in more detail, so we can come up with some language that's going to benefit us in making sure that the lakes are protected. So many municipalities throughout Ontario and Canada as a whole have removed the seasonal aspect of development from zoning bylaws as a result of the difficulty in proving non-conforming uses. So when we do the zoning bylaw, like I said, we do want to look at that, the definitions and the seasonal aspect of it, and whether or not that's something we want to remove. This is, the zoning bylaw, I should mention also, is going to go through public consultation process, so this is something that will be discussed with the residents as a whole before any decisions are brought to council for decision-making. So the last question that I felt needed to be addressed was, what is a holding provision? This is not something that council would have normally seen in the past. I don't think I've ever brought a holding provision forward to council for consideration in my ten year, or nine years I've been here. So I did want to give you a little bit of information on how that works. There is an attachment to this document with the ministries, I guess their guidelines on what a holding provision is, that I hope you guys all took a look at. The only thing I do want to be clear on is that, once, so let's say the bylaw is approved with the holding provision, you need a zoning amendment to remove that holding provision. It requires public notification that we are going to go to council to remove the holding provision, but there is no formal public meeting. And if council agrees to remove the holding provision, the public cannot appeal it. It is only the applicant versus council that have the ability to bring it to an LPAD hearing. Okay? So I just want council to be very aware of that. I also put a little section in here, what if council chooses to defer? I did mention that briefly at the last meeting, that we are past our 100 days, that we, 180 days that we need to make a decision. As long as the applicant is working with you, they don't necessarily appeal to LPAD because it's costly and it's, so if we can keep doing the deferral if we want to, and try to get the information and keep it open, it's not what I recommend. I would very much like to see a decision be made and give some clear direction on what we're requiring before they take the next steps. So that's it in a nutshell. I tried to make it brief, but if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Ashley, I have a rather long-winded response to this, and bear with me, council, that I'm gonna use my maximum time. I'm recommending that the Nettie Lake rezoning application be denied, and for the following reasons. It can be all classified as denied and deferred, because the applicant can come back once he meets the requirements and reapply. We go back to that Ministry of Natural Resources report of January the 12th, 1978. It stated the following: "In determining the capacity lake aggregate water quality index, the lowest capacity was 630 user days. The present use of the lake at that time is equivalent to 12,400 user days, thus exceeding water quality capacity by 11,770 days." Further in that report, "In view of what we must consider gross overdevelopment, no new vacant lots should be created." They also mentioned about the boat capacity, we won't get into that, that's under discussion with the residents out there now, that's another issue. Now, that seems to be completely ignored in the OMB report, and in my opinion, it's very important what that original report said. The number of houses on that lake have, are quite a bit higher than they were in 1978. So if it was overdeveloped in 1978, it's much overdeveloped now. The OMB not including this in their approval, I think is gross negligence. I think all they did was pass it on back to the municipality, you deal with it, and I don't think that's fair. The current application doesn't meet the town's official plan. There's no information on the natural features of the properties that have been addressed. There may be wetlands and watercourses, as noted on Lot 7 and 67 on Pine Tree Road. There's no accurate indications of the extent of permanent use of the lake, which should be taken into account in the proposed lake shore capacity study. There's no information provided on whether the properties can meet the criteria from a proper study. It's currently out of compliance with the official plan, as noted. No assessment of the potential impact of the backlots on the water quality of Nettie Lake has been covered off. No development should be permitted on the backlots until the two, it says in your report, a one-foot reserve, I believe it's a two-foot reserve. That was my understanding, as part of the road allowance. Passing the rezoning bylaw with a holding clause until conditions are satisfied, it's up to the developer to have the lake shore capacity study completed. This is not a local resident with, that owns two or three lots next to his dwelling and wants to sever one and put up a new house. This is a developer that's developing six lots. In most communities that I've ever lived in, and I've lived in 14, the developer was required to meet these standards before the zoning was changed. The holding pattern and conditions are, if, are met, the holding conditions are not registered on the title of the property, so somebody buying that property, or one of those lots, unwittingly would not know that there are these holding conditions on there. They could be buying the lot and not being able to build, which could end up, if they can't, you're gonna end up with trailers out there. Do we need six more trailers on the, out at Nettie Lake? I don't think so. That just provides additional risk on the environment, and no taxation for the town. When we look at the sign entering the town of Kirk Lake, it says Kirk Lake, the Right Environment. Let's start walking the talk. We've turned a blind eye to Nettie Lake for 40 years. Let's not expose the town to additional risk. The residents of Morissette Township draw their drinking water from that, from Nettie Lake. We don't need another Walkerton on our hands. And each councillor has a personal liability in the water quality that we cover in our municipality. So, therefore, I recommend a decline of the request. Further comments? Rick?
Yeah. This situation to me, it equates, I'm from a farming community, and there's a saying down there, it's, you're closing the door after the horses have left the barn. And that's exactly what this situation is. We have a number of people that are living out there full-time, that knew or should have known that that was going against the zoning, and they think it's okay that they can do that. And, you know, that's not gonna impact the water quality in a negative way, but it's okay. Now we have a person who has some land out there, who has agreed to complete all the studies, to do everything he has to do, but unfortunately, the studies can't be done when there's ice on the lake. Well, that's not, you know, that's problematic. It's not like he said, "I'm not gonna do the studies." He's gonna do them, and we go by the results of the studies, of the up-to-date current As far as someone buying a lot and then finding out they can't build on it, that's not a concern of council. That's a concern of the person that bought the lot. That's, that's, you know, when I buy a lot, I have to check into it, I get a lawyer to check into it, I have a trusted realtor that I use. That's up to me as the buyer, to ensure that I know what I'm buying. That has nothing to do with a council decision. And just for the record, trailers that are using holding, their holding tanks are the least intrusive type of structure you could have on that lake. They're not putting their gray water or their sewage water into the ground, or into a septic tank. Environmentally, they're much more friendly than a permanent structure. And if they have to get a building permit, or a septic permit from the health unit, well, the health unit won't be able to issue them one, as far as I can see. So, and to mention Walkerton in this situation, simply sensationalizing the whole issue. Like, come on, this has got nothing to do with Walkerton. This is not going to kill people. I mean, let's be realistic here. I'm in favor of allowing this go forward with the hold put on it, and when we get all the information, up-to-date information, not information from 1978, then we can say yea or nay. But in the issue of fairness, I can't see how we can see. Well, we turned a blind eye for all these years to these people changing their cottages into houses, and now we're gonna go by the rule of law? Like, that's not very fair. And I certainly couldn't support anything that would be that blatantly unfair.
Can I rebut that, Councilor Owens? Okay. First of all, the applicant has stated that he has done everything that he possibly can, so he has no intentions of doing this study. He's passing it on to the owners of the lot. Let me finish. That, if these lots do not qualify, meet the standards, and are turned down, they will not be able to build on that lot. We will not issue a permit. So, why not put the horse in front, not the cart in front? Get this study done, and he can build it into the cost of his lots, it's not stopping him from going ahead, and we've accomplished the same thing. I don't think we should be passing this change in zoning before that's done. Councilor Owen?
Well, I don't know where he got the information that he wasn't gonna complete the studies, because I talked to them directly, face to face, and they told me in no uncertain terms that they were gonna complete the studies, and they had no problem with that, and they thanked me for asking for fairness on the issue. So where your information came from, I don't know, but it's totally opposite of the information that the property owners gave to me.
Well, it's from a reliable source sitting in this room.
More reliable than the owners of the property?
Well, that's where it came from.
Well, they told...
Okay. Sorry, you're not allowed to speak at this time, but...
Yes.
Wait, wait. Can we speak to society? Can I speak up?
Councilor Owen?
Okay, for one, what he is saying is true, because the owner was sitting there two weeks, two council sessions ago, and he's clearly said that he was gonna, he couldn't do it now, but he was planning on doing it once the ice melted. So I don't see anywhere, so unless this person is willing to come up and to say in front of everybody that, no, your sources are more reliable, I'm not giving any credit to that. It's the same as sending an anonymous complaint to town council, or to TKL, or clerk at TKL, and not signing your name to it. You don't sign your name, it's worth absolutely nothing. Show up, put your money where your mouth is, and come and say something.
Okay, I'm gonna allow this gentleman to, is Mr. Lang, is it?
No.
Nope, sorry. Okay. Go ahead, Councilor White.
I would like to actually ask for an article. Thank you, a point of order. At normal council meetings, members of the public are not permitted to speak. I am sorry, but at this juncture, we need to follow procedure. Does anybody disagree with me?
I will accept that, but my understanding was that the chair of the meeting can allow it. It has been, but we'll stick with that. Any further discussion? Councilor White?
Sorry, Ashley, getting back to your report, the holding provision on the first page says the holding provision can only be removed after successful completion of the following, an updated lake shore capacity study. Does this mean on every single property individually, like as they're sold off and people come back to council, like if it's a year apart, if it's 10 years apart, will they need to do an updated study?
Yes. Sorry, yes. So what'll happen is if he keeps them all in his name and decides to go with the whole study and remove the holding provision as a whole, he'd do it, obviously, as soon as he's ready to, right? But if he's selling the lots off and each individual person's going to be worrying about their own study, they can come up at any point. They can't remove the holding provision and start developing until that lake capacity study's done, so...
So essentially, what we're doing by putting the holding on is potentially having ongoing monitoring of this body of water at no cost to the town of Kirk Lake.
Yep, and it's for the recommendation that we peer review it as well.
Further comments? Councilor Adams?
So, if they were to come back, Ashley, with the report, so just reading it, like, we can't really remove it. If he, if he, like, brings it forward and has everything, then like, you can't deny it at that point, right? There's, that's not an option.
Well, you could deny it, but then you'd be going to LPAD and fighting it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know. Where I am on this is that, like, when this application came forward, we filled a room of individuals who spoke out about this, who all live on the lake, and certainly need to listen to them, right? And if the option two has the individual still coming back and providing the evidence without the LPAD possibilities, then I'm almost in favor of number two. The Walkerton thing. We all sat in the same course. That is not a Walkerton thing, I'm sorry.
In my opinion, as far as, no matter which way we're going with this, where the vote goes, we are gonna have an appeal. So I wouldn't, that shouldn't scare anybody off, one way or the other. Any further comments, discussion? Is that coming back as a bylaw? Yep. Establishing access to property behind 155 Archer Drive?
Yeah, so this is...
Whoa.
Oh, I'm tired of Dennis.
Oh. Yeah. Forgot about Dennis. No.
You were so quiet, then, I forgot about Dennis.
So this request here, this is, this has to do with a land sale that we did back in, I think it was January last year, and it was to safeguard an area south of FedEx for potential expansion of the facility. The developer had experienced it in other municipalities where they built, what they've built here, and a few years from now, they decided to do an expansion. So at this point, the property that they had wouldn't have been big enough to accommodate an expansion, so he's safeguarding two acres to be able to allow for that to happen. The only issue with selling land south of them is that he's putting it into different ownership name, which means you're creating a piece of land that doesn't have proper access or ingress, ingress to the land. So we needed to create an easement on the side to say that, if, let's say, that were to be developed separately, we have an area... we have an area where we'd be able to get access to that property. The easement's written in a way that all of the costs would be borne on the developer if it were to happen. So servicing that lot, the road construction of that lot, that's all to be borne by the developer. So that it's, it's not an added cost to us. But you can see it there, it's just a, a small 66-foot road allowance-sized easement that we could potentially use as a road later on. Is there any concerns with this?
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, Ashley, I, have we had any, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure of the landscape back there, but I know at one point Agneagle Eagle had some pretty significant mineral, mineralization suitable for an open pit operation, is my understanding. This property behind 155 Archer, is that in Agneagle Eagle's area of interest in terms of an open pit mine?
Okay, I have a, I have a question, a follow-up thing for you after. So the, yes and no. It's in their exploration area? It's further south where they'd actually go to open pit. We've been in communication with Agneagle Eagle when we, when we transferred, or when we agreed to transfer that piece of land, there was no concern. So if they were to do something, they would buy everybody out and send them on their way.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure we had had communications with them. So we're not going for short-term gain and long-term pain.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We did that as part of the sale.
But coming back, coming back as a bylaw?
The next report has to do with the request to host a material household hazardous waste drop-off event. I have Jenna here too to answer these questions because she's my expert with everything hazardous waste. So just to kind of put the bug in the air, we do need to give our Drainall, the company that we typically deal with, an answer of whether or not we want to or interested in proceeding with scheduling a date for a material hazardous waste event. So the costs associated with this are approximately $12,000. We do make some revenue as a result of certain things that come our way, but typically it's an expense at the end of the day from the things that get dropped off and pulled away from our, our landfill. Obviously, there's the perks of our landfill lasting longer and us not seeing these things dumped in that area. We, we typically were rotating the spring cleanup herb site collection with the material hazardous waste in years past. I can say it's been, I think the last event was held in May of 2017. So we've gone a couple of years without any of the spring cleanups or material hazardous wastes. So we wanted to come to council and ask whether or not this is something that they'd like us to schedule for 2020, whether we should be holding the date of, I think it's May 20, after the long weekend, I believe. Yeah, May 23rd, sorry. Do you have any comments or questions, concerns?
Counselor Adams?
So for the funding to assist with these costs, so we have to apply it or is it like, it's available?
Yeah, so I think what happens is they bring the, I mean, Jen can answer that one better. She'll probably give you a better answer than me. I'll take a guess at it and she'll, she'll narrow it down. So the way that it works is you have a set list of items that are eligible for the funding, and they will give you that money. So there's two different companies. One deals with paints and coatings, and the other one deals with automotive materials. So there's items that are listed that are eligible for funding.
So with the operational cost of $11,750, so how much could be funded that?
That $11,000's actually to operate the event. So there would be extra depending on the materials that come in. So if there's anything that's not part of that funding, we would have to pay for. That's above the lot? Yes, okay.
And do you remember what the deficit was in 2017 when we ran it?
It's, it's, yeah, I think we had funding received with six, so municipal cost was 26, 230. The funding we received was 16, 4. So it was a $10,000 deficit.
Any further questions or discussions? We have a bylaw?
It's a resolution that's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The council approves hosting a material hazardous, material household hazardous waste drop-off event on May 23rd, 2020.
All in favor?
We received a request from Caldwell to crush aggregate at mining claim 16, 527 and 16, 528. This was the area where we had the zoning amendments take place last year. The site plan control agreement was registered in December, and we did put specific provisions in there to try and mitigate any type of effects that they would have on a neighboring property owner. So the site plan control agreement, as it stands right now, reads that 24-hour crushing would need council approval prior to proceeding. So the request is pertinent to that section of the, of that site plan control agreement where he's asking for an ability to crush for 24 hours for a two-week period to be wrapped up and finished before the holidays. Based on my conversation with him, chances are crushing's likely not to happen for another year or year and a half, two years, depending on any bigger, big significant projects that tend to happen or that are going to come up. He did, we did receive a letter from the neighboring property owner, and Mr. Caldwell's here and does have a handout that I can give to you guys. I can either scan it, send it to you tomorrow. If you want to see it today, you can. It's just addressing some of the concerns that she had. So did you want me to get him to do that? Yeah, okay. I'll grab them for him. So I did want to make it clear that I have sent this over to the Ministry of Environmental, oh, sorry, Ministry of Environment, to be sure that everything checked out with the ECA that's currently on the crushing equipment, whether they met the setback requirements. Ministry of Environment had no concerns for crushing 24 hours. It, it checked out. So there's, there's absolutely no environmental concern with allowing this to continue. It's just the permission from council as per the site plan control agreement that needs to be gained prior to proceeding.
Is Mr. Caldwell available for questions? When we originally approved the zoning for this, at that time, you said you would be blasting once a year. Now we're talking for...
A point of order. We already raised this issue once tonight about not being on the agenda, not being able to speak. And now we said no to one person, and we're now saying yes to another person. That is concerning to me. It, it doesn't seem fair that we did it to one, we're not going to do it to the other, and it's the same meeting.
Sorry?
Fair enough.
Yes, that's right.
If there are questions though, I mean, we can answer them at another date for sure.
Okay.
This is correspondence from the MOE. They're about the complaint of the blast, that they weren't properly notified. I'm assuming it was the neighboring property. And I've also included the consultant that we had hired, which is Shawa from town here. For the water testing, just to show that we...
Unfortunately, you're not able to talk.
Thanks, Chuck. If there are questions, by all means, direct them to me, and I can get them addressed and bring them at a next council meeting or circulate them by email, whichever way.
I would suggest, and if there's future applications of this nature from Mr. Caldwell, that he request to speak at the same time because I think he can offer valuable information at the time. But we have to respect our policy. Counselor Adams?
Yep, so how many total blasts have occurred since we approved?
I'll find out for you.
It's been more than one though, right?
I believe there's been two, off the top of my head.
Counselor Owens?
The crushing they want to do, been there for two weeks on a 24-hour basis. Would it be an extra cost for them to just stick to the original plant site, like, plant site agreement to do it on a 12-hour basis for four weeks and...
Yes, there would be extra costs.
But...
It's the operational costs, right? So you're demobilizing, you're going back, you're having to pay staff for longer.
Well, you're still paying staff, like 24 hours days, so your staff is still there.
I can find, I can find out exactly where the costs come from, but I...
Yeah, I think I went to rent in the crusher.
I should mention that typically when it comes to, like, we have two other quarries that are up there. When it comes to crushing, there's no limit, it's 24 hours. They don't have this clause in the site plan control agreement. Yeah, yep.
You're considerably closer than what the Miller is and the Pedders' interpretation is.
Yep.
That does have to be taken into consideration.
There'd only be a couple limits. Counselor Owens?
Yeah, Counselor Perry will be back shortly. He just had to take some medication.
We'll have a short break. Go ahead.
I have a resolution that's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perry. The council permits the request from Caldwell Construction to crush aggregate at mining claim 16, 527 and 16, 528 on a 24 hours, on a 24-hour basis for no more than a two-week duration prior to December 24th, 2019.
All in favor? Opposed? Go ahead, Ashley?
Yes. Okay, so we ended up being notified that there is some funding opportunities that will be coming available in the new year. This is called the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, and it's the green stream that we are interested in applying for. What it is, is essentially, it's quite a significant amount of money that's being available. The funding cap is 3 million, but total amount actually available is based on the population-based formula. So it'll likely be a little bit less than that that's available. The funding is coming at a 40% from the federal government, 33.3% from the provincial. So we're essentially responsible for 26.67% of the expenses associated with the project. So we did a little bit of brainstorming. We had a few projects that we thought would qualify. We first looked at the Swistika decommissioning and whether the extension of the five-kilometer pipe would be a good use of this, this funding. Unfortunately, the projects cannot, could not have begun already. It has to be a new project that's starting up. So we couldn't apply towards the Swistika decommissioning. We also looked at the sanitary storm tunnel rehabilitation. But unfortunately, with the deadline of January 22nd, we didn't think we'd have enough time to gather and properly price out the, the, the project for this application. So we actually started looking at our capital list, and we, we thinking, we're thinking the best way to, to use this funding would be through the energy retrofits of the water treatment plant. We're thinking the project will be in and around $900,000. The best part of this is that we could actually include SCADA into this funding application. So that $489,000 hit that we had on capital, over the next couple of years, we want to try and push towards this funding, funding option. And then we'd only be responsible for 26% of that cost. So the green stream is prioritizing projects that address critical health and safety issues associated with water, waste, water, and storm infrastructure. And it's, the eligibility is being assessed using the outcome-based approach. So we looked at, well, SCADA obviously is the number one thing that we wanted to tackle as part of this project. We also wanted to update the backwash pump and the blower, which are other capital items that we have on the list for the next five years. We, we met actually this morning with a local contractor to get some quotes on the conversions based on a recent energy audit that was done at the water treatment plant. We're also looking at getting electric quotes as well for some of the various lights that are in the building. I think all of them are the fluorescent lights that we'd like to convert to, I think it was T8s. Am I getting that right?
Yeah, so we, most of the lighting right now is original, T32s. We're going to change all those to T8s, and a lot of old mercury vapor lights inside. We'll change the LED. So it's a good opportunity to change our, all the lighting, so... And also to change all the electric heating into a, a gas-fired units. And the contractor, we had a good site visit this morning, and it looks like we can bring the gas line to, to that site. So it'll be a good opportunity to change everything to gas. So right now, we're burning about 130,000 kilowatt per month just on heating electricity from the energy study that was done. So the paybacks can be really good because on top of only costing 26%, just the saving energy, the payback will be really good, so...
I think they mentioned 4.5 BTUs, right? 4.5 million?
4.5 million BTUs in the building, but, yeah. So we're gonna use different type of equipment, but gas-fired everywhere. In place, we're using infrared heating where it makes sense. And we'll put a boy, a small boiler in a couple of places, and a four-stair furnace where the ductworks are already in place. So, so we went through the entire complex this morning, the contractor. So we're hoping to have all our, our costs in by mid-January.
Counselor Owens? Owens, Owens?
Sorry. So right now, that whole building is electric heated?
Everything, everything's electric.
Wow. Okay, and you mentioned the, the payback. That was going to be my other question. But obviously, for heating a building that size with electricity, we're just blowing money. So, yeah, I support this.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, certainly the counselor's guide to cost savings, I think I shared it during the budget process, one of the biggest ones is look at finding energy efficiencies. It's, it's a fixed cost, and if we can make the right investments to reduce those fixed prices, then that's what we need to continue to do, and I'm certainly on board.
Counselor Owens, did you?
No.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Perry?
The SCADA system, that's not set in, is a done deal right now.
No, no, these, these are, these are only estimates we're using to get the grants. We will go for RFPs once, we have to. Everything we do right now, we're just collecting prices that we got estimates. Like even for the mechanical part of the, even the gas heating, we're getting one estimate... heating, we're getting one estimate right now, but afterwards we have to go and get tenders, because we're getting government money, you have no choice, you have to go for tenders.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Joanne?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The council directs the interim chief administrative officer to proceed with application to the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, Green Stream, for energy retrofits to the water treatment plant.
All in favor? Passed.
My last report has to do with the signing of a data-sharing agreement with the MTO for the Swastika decommissioning project. Right now we're in the process of finalizing the geotechnical work that's supposed to take place to narrow down where the pipe will go from Swastika to the new plant. They, after a brief conversation with MTO a couple of weeks ago, we figured out that they actually have some geotechnical data that's already been done on Highway 66, so this is just a cost-saving measure for able to use their data to find all the best places to put our holes, or the borehole drilling, and get the missing gaps rather than have to do a full analysis, we'll have some cost savings as a result of it.
Counselor Owen.
And we're reciprocating with MTO, right? We're, we're sharing the information we're getting with MTO, it's a reciprocal...
Surely, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Sounds like a good deal to me.
Coming back as a bylaw? Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
So the first one has to do with the traffic and parking bylaw, there were many amendments that were brought to council over the last probably month or so. These are the ones that were just housekeeping and really easy that, that council had agreed to, so these were not everything, because Ashley will be bringing back. So the schedules were all attached to the agenda. So I have a motion that's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owens, the bylaw 19-119, being a bylaw to amend, bylaw 15-017, regulating traffic and parking, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Or was there a question? Sorry.
So for item 17 in the report, especially our winter parking one, is it possible to make sure that that's, like, broadcasted? Because I know I brought up the amending our parking bylaws for Christmas and New Year's, and this is, that's going to be in favor, that people will be allowed to park on the street as long as there's no winter maintenance for Christmas and New Year's, and pretty much as long as there's no winter maintenance happening. That's, it's pretty big.
Ashley's marking it down.
All in favor? Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, the bylaw 19-120, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the easement over 155 Archer Drive, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
Any comments? All in favor? Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owens, the bylaw 19-121, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a data-sharing agreement with the Ministry of Transportation, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Any comments? All in favor? Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, the bylaw 19-122, being a bylaw to ratify amendments to the 2019 capital and operating budgets, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
Comments? None noted, all in favor? Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, the bylaw 19-123, being a bylaw to increase water rates for 2020 by 2%, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
Yeah, comments, Counselor White?
So even though I did sign it so that it could come to the table, I do have some reservations on this 2%, though we all understand that costs go up every year, and I can understand why we want to avoid the disaster of last year. We've yet to see the results of Strategy Corps, and I'm just wondering if there was anything in the report that could kind of offset the need to do an increase at this time.
I don't think we can really respond to that at this point. Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so certainly we are getting a report back that we paid $90,000 for, for the purpose of finding cost savings and everything. That report comes back next week, I just, I understand that we don't want to do the exact same thing as last year with halfway through, I just want it to cost more, but if the structuring and the changes to our corporation is able to find savings, I just personally don't feel that we should be jumping to the 2% until our report comes out next week.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I just want to say first that because water rates affect me the same as everybody else in the community, I am allowed to speak on water rate increases. I'm not allowed to take part in their budgeting process. I'm not in favor of a 2% increase, especially after we raised it, what, 18% last year, I believe, the water rates. I'm hearing more complaints about the water rates than I am about the taxes, and that says something. So, and also, Joanne, I'd like a recorded vote on this, please. Thank you.
Counselor Adams, or, Owen, sorry.
When do the water bills have to go out for? What's the cutoff date, like, when do we send them out?
They're prepared as January 1st. They go out to residence, residential, are monthly, I think.
So we don't have another meeting where we can pass, like, if we were to defer this term?
Unless you want to call a special meeting sometime between now and January.
Not especially, well, I didn't mean it that way. Like, I, I just want to see what all our options are, like, because they're, Counselor Adams and Counselor White are right, like, the Strategy Corps coming back, and there might be, I, I don't see, I personally don't see it, but there might be a possibility of to save some money, so can we wait, defer to the first meeting of January? And I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
Counselor White?
Can we just not put a special meeting next week? Because we're meeting next week, and if we put it right after, then we'll have some answers, possibly. And we're already meeting, so.
When you call a special meeting, you have to declare the purpose for that meeting, so we've already declared purpose that that meeting for, the special meeting on the 17th is for, to, to receive a report from Strategy Corps.
Yeah, but then can we have...
So if the following week, which would be the 24th?
No, 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 could we, yeah, can we adjourn that meeting and then start another one? You know what I mean? Like, we have the meeting for the report, adjourn that meeting, and then have the special meeting to deal just with this issue after, can we do that?
You will have just received the report from Strategy Corps? So you, my suggestion is that you take the time to...
Okay.
To digest it before you start implementing.
I'm first.
I'm sorry.
Will we, we have that report prior to that meeting, or is it just?
It'll be just at the meeting, it'll be just at the meeting.
Okay, so there won't be the opportunity to kind of...
No, just at the meeting, because there's, there's a section that's only discussing closed session, so, so it'll be just at the meeting, yes.
I can understand the concern of everybody on the increase in water rates, it's a, it's a hot potato, no question about it. The biggest problem is, is the reserves, whether it be water, or so we're, we're in the same boat. We have neglected to put money in reserve funds planning for, whether it's 30 or 40 years down the road when we need a new water treatment plant, or sewage treatment plant. We have to come up with a reserve plan, reserve fund plan, and this is one of the reasons, mainly for, for these two as well. The province is mandating that we come up and replace these plants at the end of their life cycle. Is the 2% is basically, if there's no change in the operations, it's basically covering increase in employment cost, workers' cost, and hydro and whatnot, that 2% would be eaten up pretty quick. My biggest concern, again, is that reserve fund. We keep falling behind with the previous council and previous before that, nothing ever gets done, so if we want to push this over a couple of weeks, I can under, I don't have a problem with that, I just want everybody to keep in mind that we have to come up with a firm plan in place for reserve funds, so, just to add to it. So, Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I feel the same way, you know what, I mean, I'd hate to see us come back in June with a 4% increase or a 6% increase because we didn't do something in January, and I get it, you know, and then go, you know, and this is what happened last rate increase, money wasn't put away, there was all of a sudden all these increased costs, and costs that had to be funded out of the water, the water money, there was no, there's no options, you, you know, you can't come off the, and I understand it's still rate payers, but, you know, if we ignore a small increase, we could get stuck with a large, large increase somewhere down the road, and I think that we have to be responsible, it's not going to be popular, I, I get it, nobody wants to pay more money, and nobody's going to want to pay more money in June or July when, you know, if we decide that we needed a higher increase in order to fund whatever's happening to the, to the water department, not wasting the money, hydro has gone up, you know, costs are gone up again, wages are going up, that's not going to be something that's going to stop happening, I think we have to be responsible as a council and, and take those increases, you know, a small 2% increase is a lot better than, than looking at a 4% or 6% increase come middle of summer.
Counselor White?
But sadly, just to be clear, just because we raise it 2% at this meeting, doesn't mean the numbers will come back and we won't be raising it again later on. It's, it's a fact.
This is very possible.
So I've asked, been asked for a recorded vote, so just so you know, the resolution is that bylaw 19-123, being a bylaw to increase water rates for January 2020 by 2%, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed. So Counselor Patrick Adams, yea or nay?
Nay.
Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Rick Owens, yea or nay?
Nay.
Counselor Casey Owens, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Dennis Perrier, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Stacy White, yea or nay?
Nay.
Counselor Mayor Pat Kylie, yea or nay?
Yea.
So that is four yays and three nays, so the motion is passed.
Thank you.
The next one is moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, the bylaw 19-124, being a bylaw to amend, bylaw 18-147, extending user fee rates to January 30, 2020, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
June.
What did I say?
January.
I want to retire. Sorry, June 30th, 2020.
All in favor? Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, that bylaw 19-125, being a bylaw to assign members of council, to council staff committees, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
Any comments, Counselor Adams?
So my name's on long-term care, so am I like a backup on that? Like, how does that work? Are these meetings during the day? Because I have a full-time job.
We normally meet at, it's around 4:30, I believe, at Tech Pioneer.
So I'm now part of the Tech Pioneer resident?
To accommodate yourself for that purpose. Any further comments? All in favor? Passed.
And I've been also asked for a recorded vote on this one, so it's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, sorry Dennis, sorry. Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White, the bylaw 19-126, being a bylaw to amend, bylaw 12-019, regulating zoning at Nettie Lake, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed. Recorded vote, so Counselor Patrick Adams, yea or nay?
Nay.
Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, yea or nay?
Nay.
Counselor Rick Owens, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Casey Owens, yea or nay?
Yea.
Sorry, yea? Counselor Stacy White, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Pat Kylie, yea or nay?
Nay.
So that's three for and three against, it's a tie vote, which means it is defeated.
Questions from council to staff, Counselor Adams?
Yes, is it possible to get an update on the status of our blower?
Yes, I was going to talk about it, might as well talk about it now, so, so, it's good news that we...
Go for it.
Our blower came in last Thursday, as we had discussed last week, and so we've tried it Friday, we did snow clearing on one street to make sure everything was A-OK, everything's fine, so, so tonight our blower will be out all night, going to be doing the snow removal on Government Road, mostly concentrating on that, there's, there's quite a bit to do there, and then moving on to the downtown core, so we'll be doing that for the next two days for sure, and then back at it next week, so, so, so you'll, you'll see a big difference tomorrow morning.
I did ask a lot of questions last year in regards to the process of moving the snow, especially how it was twice, and members of the public even commented on it too, I've seen videos of straight into the truck, and I know it's bad to ride the curb, so that would be damaging of the blades as you ride, ride in the curb, so in safety, we, we talk about controls, so what controls could be put in place to be able to still ride the curb without damaging the blades? So I think about my own snow blower, and you have those adjustments to keep you a bit lifted, is that not a possibility?
You mean to go directly along the curb? The problem is you can't do as nice of a job, okay, so it's not as clean, because the curbs unfortunately are not all even, and there's a lot of curves that are broken, so it makes it very difficult to do a good job, so just from my past experience, we, we, I looked at what we're doing here in town, we do exactly, we did exactly the same as NCAP, we use our graders to move everything to the center, it's a lot more efficient. We've tried, and, and because of the irregularities, there's cash basins, manholes, there's all kinds of obstacles, and with the blower, it's a big machine, and it's not easily, it's not easy to keep straight, and to, we have a lot of curves on the road, so that'll be, it wouldn't do a very nice job, but the grader will end to go right to tight and bring everything to the middle, so it's for efficiency and also to do it, want to be, do a good job. If we're going to do it, we want to move it all, so, that's the reason, yes.
Thanks for that update, Keith. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, we still have some streets in town that don't have curbs, would it be more efficient on those streets to only move it once?
Sometimes on residential streets where there's no curb, sometimes we, yes, we can do that, yes, when there's no curbs, and in residential streets, you, you use that's the approach.
Okay, thank you.
We take it directly from the bank, and then a loader comes behind and cleans it up.
Thank you.
That's right, yes.
No other questions from council to staff? Any notice of motions? None declared? Confirmation by law?
It's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. That bylaw 19-125 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held December 10th, 2019, be read a first, second, third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed? Counselors' reports, Counselor Owens?
Yeah, for the second year row now, I got invited to participate in the CJKL Christmas Wish Fund, the shopping spree they go on for the local kids. And it's just a great program that Kirk and Lakers paid into, like, with the Radioton last year and the Christmas Wish Show. And this money is from locals, it's spent locally, and it's for over 100 local kids. So I just wanted to commend them on this great program we have here.
Well said. I'd like to comment on the name change of the, potential name change of the Joe Mavernak complex. Just want to clarify a few things. When we passed the motion at council, part of the discussion was that not necessarily taking the name Joe Mavernak off the building. Counselor Casey, to his credit, Owens, mentioned the Ruon case where the I.M. Gold and Dave Keon Center has a combination of both names. And that was one of the considerations that, that we would, as a group of council, counselors would look at. There are other options. Unfortunately, what happened, I don't want to play the name game here. Maybe we could have handled it a little bit better. I'll explain what happened. In August of 2018, the Mavernak family contacted a former council member of longstanding, I'm not going to throw out a name, and requested information as to when the signage for Joe Mavernak complex would go back up. It had been taken down during the time of the pool construction and had not been put up. Unfortunately, there was no response that came back, it never came to council. I was on that council. I have no memory, and I'm 99.9% sure. It didn't come back to council for discussion, and nobody got back to the Mavernak family, which is totally wrong. And I apologize on behalf of the past counselors, council, that's not right. We left the Mavernak family steaming for a year, and so when they heard of the possible name change, obviously they were upset, and I understand that. I think most of us do. But it was never meant to diminish the work that former Mayor Joe Mavernak did, or his contributions to the, to the town, and also the contributions that the family has made to, I believe, the library. They've been very good to us, and they always speak highly of Kirk Lake. So we are sorry for what happened. We could have probably communicated a little bit better. I've spoken with her two or three times already, and I said we would keep the Mavernak family in the loop as far as to where we go further on this. We want to come up with a solution that's acceptable both to the Mavernak family and to council, and what's best for Kirk Lake. So I believe our council members are on the same wavelengths, and we will ensure that that, that does happen. Right now, it's business as usual. There is no name change. It's still the Joe Mavernak complex. Unfortunately, when it was supposedly supposed to change and be named under Joe Mavernak's name, it was not properly processed by the council at that time. At least, we can find no record that that ever happened. And that just complicated the matters. We have to get that resolved, but we will certainly keep in mind as we go forward what we're going to do with the name change. It may just remain as the Joe Mavernak complex. It may be a combination of both, as they've done in Ruon. But we will keep everybody informed, and I just wanted to clarify that. There was no slight meant towards the Mavernak family. Any further comments? Counselor Owen?
Yes, I heard from Brian Hamilton, who, anybody who's been here for 30 years would know that name and recognize it as somebody who was very involved in the community. In fact, won the Lifetime Achievement Award from CJKL. And he has coffee on a regular basis with a bunch of ex-KLers, and, and we've all read their emails. And, yes, they were quite excited. So I, Brian asked me to send him an email, which he will distribute to his group, and explaining exactly what was going on. And I explained to them at no time it was a council's intention to remove the name, that we were looking at all options, and I pointed out the Dave Keon, thanks, Casey. I'd seen that done, but I, that that was something that we could pursue. I also explained to them with the downloading that's coming forward from the Ford government, we have to look at all avenues that we have for raising revenue, and this is one of them. I also mentioned to them that unfortunately, this issue took a life of its own on Facebook. Well, I think I used social media. I don't want to plug one over the other. And, and the intention of council somehow got lost. And all we did was ask the staff to prepare a report for us to bring it back so we can look at our options and hopefully maximize our revenue streams. And Brian was quite pleased with that and said he would distribute it to that whole group. And if I could remember their names, most people, a lot of people in this room would recognize them. Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so certainly, our code of conduct, I reviewed it the other day, it's actually a pretty refreshing to review, especially when you're having to deal with members of the public that choose to not use facts, use abusive language, curse words, insulting words, tons of expressions. It's still our code of conduct as members of council to still respect them. So I still like biting your tongue on social media sometimes with individuals that choose to ignore facts, and it's just difficult. We need to still conduct and respect others respectfully. So it is within our code of conduct, so it is good to reflect on that matter, and sometimes when things get tough, you just have to keep providing facts and smile, and exactly as I say, it's just been communicated here again, so it's like a broken record of the name hasn't changed. So I also like to thank all the individuals that have reached out and are encouraging of this process of to be able to respect the name and still have revenue come in. As, as mentioned, it was a 6% levy increase just for the mortgage. The operating cost is around an extra 1%, so that brought in a 7% levy increase. So while we argued 2% of the water increase, taxpayers were given 7% specifically for a pool. So I'm excited to see the options that are provided, because as any counselor's guide suggests, you don't race to decisions. You ask staff to investigate, and that's what we've done, and we wait back for the report. So that's the process, and I respect it, and I certainly respect our code of conduct.
Thank you. Counselor Ivanoff?
I'd like to reflect what Patrick just said. I think it's, it's important that people on social media, I mean, a lot of them don't come to council, a lot of them don't read the minutes, a lot of them don't know what's going on, and, but they have an opinion. And I think, you know, we just have to kind of wait it out, and, you know, it's our job to try and control costs and to try and find places of income, if there are any opportunities. And I think this was just one of those places, and I think this is the reason we all voted for it, was to try and, try and get some other income coming in. Because really, if we can offset the costs of our, that pool, you know, it's almost a million dollars a year increase cost for this, this community, it's a huge amount of money. So that's the first thing I'd like to say. The second thing I'd like to say is, I want to congratulate the Rotary Club for picking up the Fish Derby and giving us an event. It's a huge event for Winter Carnival. And had they not done that, we would have lost a huge event. There's 550 people that go out there, plus their children. It's a huge event in this community. I think it's going to be a great weekend. It's February 22nd. Anybody hasn't bought a ticket, buy one. If you can support the Rotary Club in any way, do it. And I hope other clubs and organizations can find other ways of replacing some of the events we're going to lose with the festivals committee taking this hiatus. Thank you.
Eve?
Yeah, so just a comment on Counselor Owen's comment about what's expected from staff for as far as getting sponsors. I just want to clarify that. Are we expecting staff to sort of draft up the letter requesting consideration for sponsor for our new complex and send this to organizations and meeting with organizations or companies? Is that what is expected? Because that's not very clear to, to us.
Counselor Owens?
Well, my understanding is that we're not anywhere near that point yet, okay? My understanding is we're asking, and I could be wrong on this, but staff to come back with various options that we could look at. For example, do we want to sell the naming rights to the entire building? Do we want to sell the naming rights to the entire building and retain the right to name the swimming, to sell the naming rights to the swimming pool, to the arena, to the weight room? So, and, and the other thing is, and this is an area where I have absolutely no knowledge, I have no idea what a reasonable price would be for the naming rights. And, and I don't know if staff is qualified to do that, but if, if, if they could at least...
Do some research.
Give, give us, you know, maybe they can phone other communities that have done it. But I don't, I don't think we're anywhere near the point. I don't even think we've, I'm not sure, but I, I don't think we've even made a point that we're going, we've passed a resolution saying we're going to sell the naming rights at this point.
We want to do some, do some research.
So we want as much information as we can get in terms of what our options are, how much potential income we could get, and then we'll go from there. I'm thinking that this might be, in terms of approaching companies, might be a joint politician-staff venture. I don't know, and I don't know if that breaks any regulations, but that's just an idea I have. Thank you.
The other comment, I agree with you, Rick. This is not going to happen overnight. This is going to take a little while. So it's business as usual. It's the Joe Mavernak Center. That's not changed. Also, when I did touch base with Mary Ann Mavernak, she is aware of the alternative that Casey had brought to the table last, at the last meeting, and of a joint name. She appeared, in my opinion, and I'll be talking to her again before the end of the week, that that would be acceptable. But I, that's just one option, but they have been very professional with, in my discussions that I've had with them. I can't say anything bad, and I do understand the frustration. I apologized on behalf of the previous council because I think that's where, if that had been corrected and answered and responded to, we wouldn't be sitting here today in this situation where it blew up. Counselor Owens?
Yeah, and I try to look for positive in all this, and the positive is that all these people that Brian Hamilton has coffee with are ex-Kirk and Lakers. And they are very passionate about Kirk and Lake, even though, and most of them are probably in their 80s now, so they've moved south for health reasons, some, some to be close to family. But they are so passionate about this town, and you don't see that. That is, it says something about the town. I grew up in Brampton. I could care less about Brampton today. You know, I really don't. This is my hometown now. And I know it's a little different circumstance, because the Brampton I grew up is not the Brampton that's there today, but my old schools are still there, my old houses are still there, but I don't care. But it's so neat, even if I'm not agreeing with what they're saying, it's just so neat to see the passion still alive, and some of them have been gone 20, 30 years. It's amazing.
Any further comments? We'll go to adjournment.
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The council adjourned its regular meeting of December 10th, 2019, to an in-camera meeting pursuant to Section 239.2 of the municipal act, to discuss one issue concerning employee negotiations and two items concerning identifiable persons.